Okay, should we say the pleasure of believing?
Sure.
And your flag?
Yeah, great flag.
I know. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. All right. Thank you, everybody for coming. And um, public comment, is that where you're coming in, Lee?
Yeah, I guess.
There's a public.
Kate, did you get my email? Still there? Oh.
What was that?
Did you get my email?
I got the email saying that you were gonna review uh the whatever I sent you. I don't remember what it was. Um, I didn't think after that.
Oh, okay. I just saw today that apparently it was in my spam that you it wasn't deliverable, so I emailed it again about half an hour ago, so I don't know.
Yeah, the town emails are a little bit dicey. They're.
Yeah, I'm not surprised. No offense, Bill.
I have Anthony home by myself on every camera screen in the background, so I'm just gonna keep the uh.
Okay.
Everything off, just in case he decides to lunch for the computer.
Might be more fun.
All right. Well, welcome to our guest. I'm glad she made it.
Thanks, guys. Thanks.
Ah, yes.
Thanks for having me. Um, I just thought I'd pop on and say hi, catch up with you guys. Um, and I thought I'd give you a quick update on a couple of things that I've been doing. With their Southwest Region One EMS Council, um, on which I represent you guys, Trumbull EMS. So um, we've been doing actually quite a lot on the legislative side. Um, and so one of the perks of being the president of the Region One Council also puts me on the voting board of KMSAB. Um, which is kind of cool. Um, so I just wanted to kind of fill you in on the most recent KMSAB meeting and I'm I've got far too many windows up here. Hold on. There we go. Um, but we are tracking or watching or invested in about eighteen bills that are currently being considered in the legislative session. A bunch of them are to do with like PSA service areas, people wanting to change them. There's a few that are kind of more specific to PD, but kind of impactive a little bit on EMS, keeping an eye on those. Um, but the ones that um, some are on data sharing, which is important, but we have to kind of see how they're doing that. Uh, the ones that I wanted to talk to you about predominantly are the ones that have to do with rates. Um, one in particular, which is SB one thirty-six. And which is um, an act aligning Medicaid reimbursement rates for physician and ambulance services with Medicare reimbursements reimbursement rates. Um, so that's one that we really want to support. We're um pushing for it to support to support as long as they're going with a hundred percent because there was um, I guess somewhere in there, the language is like aligning it to pay seventy percent. And we don't know why that is. It doesn't it doesn't really make any sense, but what I do know is we are getting a lot of traction um in terms of the legislative season at the moment. Uh, and if any of you were able to go up or watch um Senator, oh God, I'm already forgetting his name. Uh, there's a Senator Anwar who gave a a great um, he hosted an event, you know, regarding the staffing crisis and trying to come up with solutions for that. And um, it really made a difference how how many people went up there in uniform and and it's really seems to have gotten a lot of the legislators' attention. Um, I was at a uh via Zoom this weekend, um Eastern Connecticut hosted an EMS huddle where they hosted their state legislators, representatives, um senators. I was there remotely and I wish I had known about it sooner because I would have been there in person. There were a bunch of kind of big names and they had a panel where they had the the senators and the state representatives sat there really informally and just bounced ideas about what what we thought were was important in this legislative season, but also in general. Um, it was super helpful. It was really interesting to hear from, I think, Representative Haynes, Senator Haynes. Forgive me, I I was not taking notes. Um, but she was talking about how impactful it is at the moment that they are really paying attention to us, just giving us like some insider tips, like they are there in session Mondays, Wednesdays and Fridays and that if you are there in uniform, even if you pop down for lunch for an hour, it immediately gets them talking because it it's deceptive how people seem to think that, oh, my one voice won't make a difference, but not a lot of people go up there at all. So when people do start to go up there and they do um start to write and they actually start listening. So she was telling us how so many people are listening at the moment. So we are gonna be Kemp's app's gonna try to put together a couple of um standard emails that people can template and use to write to their state representatives, supporting some of the bills um that we're looking at that are on our watches. Some of them are a little tricky. Um, I think there was one I abstained from having an opinion on only because it's just this huge bill and it's got about four thousand different things in it, all to do with like DPH and it's it's kind of tricky to to support it um because there's so many layers to it. Um, but we're trying to focus on the ones that are really very clear cut in showing our support. We're hoping to get more reimbursement for EMS um at that that larger level. So I was gonna hope to send you guys a summary of that over the next few weeks, once we get more information. Um, but I I really can't stress it enough, like a a letter from every single one of you individually to all of our representatives. Um, and if you do happen to be, you know, I I know we see um Representative Rattigiano fairly often at events um or his restaurant, you know, things like that. If you do, if you can, just start to ask them if they know about the current legislator that is um EMS specific. I think we could really um get some movement this year. So that's that's really the main reason why I wanted to be here is just to let you know that there's a lot going on. And some of these can be really, really helpful for us. Some of them are are dealing with, you know, task forces for the shortage of EMS. Um, couple of them about, you know, using certified ambulances versus ambulance, uh licensed ambulances, which gets a little tricky again. That's your AMR um that can provide, you know, services for transfer versus us providing nine-on-one services and um those lines are getting a little blurry right now because of the crisis basically that's ongoing. So um, I don't want to take up too much of your time because it's public comment and I'm pretty sure I went over my five minutes, but that's that. Um, lots of other cool things that we're working on in the background and um I'll shoot it back to you guys and now I'm just gonna hang out for old time's sake and listen in.
Yeah, great.
Um, question, is there a list of people we should be writing to?
Yes, and that's what I'm gonna be putting together um is to to get all their contact info for you. And the other thing I am gonna do is I am going to um, there's an EMS council meeting on Thursday night for our for Region One, um which I'm the first one in three years. I will not be attending because I'm not here, but I have put on the agenda and our um vice president is gonna put it forward that we do the same thing that huddle that I just attended. Um, and I'm gonna try to invite all of our state representatives and senators that cover our region in Trumbull to sit on that panel and and Region One in general. Um, and then we also invited OMS. We had Dr. Cayman came down, Ralph came down, um Ralph Calcianno um from OMS. She's the director. Judy Reynolds was there. Mike Zachara, who's doing the community paramedicine, which is, you know, the mobile mobile intensive healthcare, which is again, something that we probably want to get some traction on, but in terms of reimbursement for that right now, we're not gonna be going anywhere um where I think we should be. So they'll all be there and I would love to, you know, if once I get that, I'll get a date up and running. Um, I'd love you guys to come down um and ask the hard questions. It it was incredible. Like these these legislators were just asking, you know, like, well, how much are you guys getting paid? Like, really? They want to know. Um, and it's evident that they don't have the information that they need. Not all of them. Some of them do. Um, one or two of them are, you know, had some interesting things, some kind of insider scoop on stuff that they were working on that I didn't even know about, which is cool. So um, they're listening. We we we've got their attention, which is great. So I think um, it's gonna be awesome to do that. So I'll put that list together. I'm gonna put like a whole summary, just give me until I get back from my trip, but of all the all the bills that we're looking at as well, just in case you have some insights or anyone wants to go through that giant DPH one for me, uh maybe a lawyer, Joel.
Who? What?
There's a lot of cool things in it that you're like, I think I want to support that, but I'm terrified, you know, that I'm gonna like support that. And the next line under says like, don't give reimbursement for PTSI to anybody. You know, it's really one of those. So yeah, that's it.
Great.
Thank you.
And feel free to email me any questions. Andrew's gonna send you the email, my hospital email, not because I don't check my Trumbull email. It's just that you can't have two outlooks on the same device. And so I really can't check both of them constantly. So I check the hospital one often and the trouble one left often. So that's that's all. Oh, and I'm also gonna put in the chat the EMS awards for the state of Connecticut and you should all vote for Trumbull EMS and all the awesome people in it. That's all. I'm gone. I'm done. Public comment finished.
Good. Uh, right. Any questions or shall we not do that? Really?
No, I think we're good.
You're good. Everybody's good. All right. Thank you, Lee. That was awesome. Um, okay, past minutes, minutes from last month. Any comments, questions? No? Someone wanted to make a motion to accept it?
I'm moved.
Okay. All right. Uh, any comments? No comment? Common being, let's vote on it. All in favor of the last minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed or sustained? No? Okay, we got them. All right. Um, chief. I think you're up.
Greetings. How is everybody?
Good. And you?
Splendid.
Good to hear.
Um, so we'll start with uh some incident statistics. Uh, total call volume is actually we're three hundred less than, I'm not three hundred. Wow, that's not accurate at all. We're three calls less than where we were last year for February. And we're averaging four hundred calls per month over the past six months or so. So we're trying to beat four hundred for this month to keep that trend going. So our call line keeps increasing. Not that we want sick or injured people. Usually coming into Trumbull is holding steady at seven-ish percent. Our transport rate is holding steady at seventy-five percent, which has been pretty much the same over the past three years or so. So we're consistent there. Which is good. Um, moving on to staffing, um we onboarded four new or trying to onboard four new full timers uh for EMTs. All but one has been currently onboarded. We're still waiting on one full-time EMT, which brings me into the issue that we're having with staffing. Uh, other than the obvious of trying to find new staff, especially full-time paramedics to come in and work. We're still dealing with the the slow and steady race from HR and putting people through. So the the full-time EMT that we hired that we're still waiting on, he waited on paperwork for I would say about a a almost a month or so. He emailed his, you guys, he's got, he got his paperwork last week. But his start date was the eighteenth of February, so he didn't get his paperwork until after his official start date. So that was issue number one. Issue number two was filled out all the paperwork, resubmitted it into HR, got a phone call today from HR saying still waiting on your paperwork and I had all this paperwork sent back. So we can't onboard somebody that is still going through this limbo. Uh, we're still waiting on three people to just get a written offer from HR. One of which is one of our volunteers that has been putting in close to forty hours a week and he came into the office. Can't say I can blame him. Came into the office on Sunday when I was here and had a very brief conversation with me saying that he was just gonna stop coming in because he's anticipating a job offer and he said that he's already passed up two other offers anticipating this one. He was offered in November for a job and he still has heard nothing from HR.
Is any of you are giving you a, I mean, have you mentioned anything to them or tried to find out why or?
Uh, I have tried multiple times, either showing up to HR to see if if they're there so I can talk. Uh, one time when I when I got there and I and I just asked the question, the answer that I got was, I'll I'll, I appreciate the honesty was, I just haven't gotten to it yet.
That's a long time not to get to.
So, right. So uh, there is, there is one point that I made a phone call to him and the the comment that I that I was told was, listen, if you want the best, you have to pay the best, number one. And number two, maybe EMS should look at getting their own HR department.
Wow. So did that? That didn't come from the head of HR, right? Or did it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, so I'm 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 dealing with what I what what we can here and the crews are doing the best they can. But, you know, we're we're covering all the shifts that we're covering all the shifts that we need to, which is which we're fortunate for, but there's a lot of people that are putting in, you know, extra hours because they feel bad that we're having shifts that are possibly gonna go uncovered. So they'll come in, they'll work more hours, which we're extremely grateful for. But now I have, for instance, I have a volunteer for three months who's been waiting for a job to get paid a little bit and no word, no nothing.
It's ridiculous.
Why did they kick back the paperwork that he submitted?
So there was no reason. He, so the employee got the paperwork, got the, so he got his written offer, maybe I would say two weeks after the verbal offer was given to him. I was then told that he had a start date of February eighteen, but he still had to go through all like the physical, the drug screen and the background. The eighteen comes and goes. He's still not in the system to to get paid or anything. Still can't work because obviously he still hasn't gone through any of the any of the other stuff, which that confused me right there. He sends in all the paperwork and he gets it kicked back with it saying, we still need you to do this. But there was no reason why it wasn't, it was blank or anything like that. It was no reason given, or at least not that I've heard from him yet.
So so they sent it back saying you need to do the paperwork that was already filled out?
And and sent back to HR. So it's like, I can, I can understand if he, if he sent the paperwork back and if there was stuff missing, but I would, I would imagine that it's like, hey, you're missing these three boxes need to be completed kind of thing. But there was no explanation that was provided.
Okay. That's strange.
I agree.
Hey, that's what it is. I don't know what we can do about it, though.
I I Kate and I have both offered multiple times and and Lee offered uh before as well. You know, can we help streamline the process either? You know, you know, Kate mentioned the last commission meeting. We we used to send the the HR paperwork to them, get everything, get everything back here and then set everything as as a package so that you make sure that they had everything. And there's no wiggle room for them right now on us being able to do that as far as like, if I can even get an answer from them or even a little or reply from them. It it, to put it, to put it simply, it's, there's a radio silence from Town Hall when it comes to this place. I've I've heard from Bill like three times, like twice this week, which is fantastic. But Bill's not HR. So it it, we're just in this limbo of just kind of lingering and trying to figure out what's what's going on, what's happening and.
Well, speaking of which, did they ever post the chief job?
Nope.
All right. Can we set up a meeting with uh the head of HR and Vicky?
Sure.
Why don't we do that? Because it's ridiculous. I mean, we all were at the same meeting where he said, get me the, what you know, what he needs and
We got it.
Heard into it and now we're in, you know, to March.
So I asked when I actually, so I won't hear from him if I ask any questions to them, but if they need something from me, obviously they'll reach out and they'll demand something right then and there.
Of course.
So I got a phone call from him last week asking, I forget what the the actual question was, but he asked me a question at the end of the conversation, like, why have you, like, just figured I'd ask the question, any update on the the chief position?
Right.
Don't need any particulars, just if there's been any status update. And it was a, it was a, nope, we want you to keep learning, see how you're doing. Like, oh, okay. I'll just hold on with no, like, job security, I guess.
Yeah, that's a little ridiculous. After we were given, you know, certain, you know, certain statements were made at that meeting with Vicki.
Right.
Um, which just looks like we have to, we have to ask for another meeting with us and uh him and Vicki. So we can get some answers.
All right. Let me call Town Hall. I'll talk to Kathy tomorrow.
Yeah, see if she can set something up. I mean, that would be great. And, you know, chief, if you can um, maybe just put together a brief summary for me about, you know, not only that position, but what you were just telling us about the other positions, because now you gotta, you also have an EMT now that's been putting in time and turning down other potential offers that wants to be here. And he's hitting a brick wall. We're gonna lose him and that's that's getting, that makes no sense.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. Um, I had the my, that first budget meeting with uh with Vicki and Maria to just kind of give the overview of what the budget was gonna look like. Um, told them about the raises that we were looking at doing the one for the remainder of fiscal twenty-three and then the 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 additional one for fiscal twenty-four. The, I felt, I felt that the the meeting went went well. There wasn't any, obviously there wasn't any promises or anything. There wasn't any answers to the questions. Um, Maria and I went back and forth a handful of times on some of the numbers and like she she was getting different numbers than I had. We talked about it. We traded everything out. She responded to me last week that she's worked too too long, too hard on this and that we were gonna give it one last shot last, I think it was Friday, one last shot to get the numbers right. If they weren't right, it was just gonna be a wash and we weren't gonna revisit it anymore. Got the, got the numbers figured out. They were mine matched hers, hers matched mine. And that's currently where we're standing on that. And she she said on the phone that it doesn't look promising for this fiscal year and it'll, it's a probably a no for next next fiscal year, but I just want to mention that the police department got a ten percent raise.
Really?
So.
What was your, what was your budget percentage increase?
Twenty percent.
Twenty?
Twenty. And of the twenty percent, I would, I would say best guess, just looking at it, was fifteen percent of it was just raises. I, I tried to not not necessarily trim, but I wasn't gonna go above and beyond on a lot of other things because the raises were the more important one. Which I flat out told them the first time, the first day I met with Vicki, that raises were the most important thing. So.
And I imagine some of that was due to inflationary pressure as well, right?
Correct. Like there's the, I mean, there was a bunch of, there was a bunch of other things that we could have included in there cardiac monitor, maybe you know, all their ALS gear, other big ticket purchases, but I don't need another cardiac monitor if I don't have employees.
Yeah, doesn't help if it can't be used by somebody.
Correct.
All right. I'll call tomorrow and see if I can get a meeting set up. Any good days for you, Joel?
Um, I'm usually pretty good. Any, you know, I can work it out as far as we can do it, you know, late in the day, obviously would be best.
Okay. All right, Shay, do you want to get in on this or does Phil want to get in on this?
Yeah, let me know when it is.
Okay.
Yeah, definitely. No, let me know. Um, I'll see what I can do in terms of timing.
Yeah, because I mean, if we can do it, you three can go and I won't go this one. And you guys are very verbal on this, so that we put. All right, I will call and see if we can get something set up in the next two weeks or so.
All right, great.
Okay. All right. Any any other questions or anything for the chief?
Other than just to tell him he's doing a great job and.
I was just gonna say that. Yeah, I was just gonna say that. That's awesome.
I had a very good mentor.
Oh, yeah, for sure, for sure.
Oh, I love you guys.
I was referring to Wes.
You are a funny guy.
Okay, um, budget update. Looks like it's next.
Uh, so budget update is was partly the the raises. Um, to my knowledge, nothing's been slashed out of it just yet. Um, my first budget meeting with the Board of Finance is eight-thirty on March twenty-first, which is a Tuesday, I believe. Yep, it's a Tuesday. Um, at eight-thirty in the morning, if you are interested. Um, and that is via Zoom. Uh, the eighteenth of March, it's a Saturday morning at ten o'clock, is the public comment hearing in the chambers, which I will, which I will be attending.
Well, that's good.
And then that's, that's everything I got for budget.
Okay. All right, um, fleet update.
Uh, fleet is nine oh two is in North Carolina and Doug Bogan and I are gonna be flying down to North Carolina on the twenty-third of March to tour AAV, take a look at the ambulance, make sure it's all set and ready to go, which Doug has little doubt that it's not gonna be spectacular. Um, and then we are going to drive it back on that Friday, the twenty-fourth, and then as soon as Chris Cockens can get all the gear put back into it and inspected, it'll be back in service on the road and on its way to calls.
Right.
And this, and this will all be happening before our brand new ambulance, nine oh three, returns from Massachusetts.
Yeah.
Because it is still up there and we have not, Doug nor I have had any sort of contact or update from them since January thirty-first.
What are they doing? What?
The the last update that we had was they were waiting for a an engineer from Wield Coach to give them a solution for the bench seat cushion and it had to be a forty-two and a half inch clearing and headroom clearance for the bench seat and they're waiting for a solution from Wield Coach on on top of a long list of other issues.
Oh, longer than that.
But this is an ambulance that it's two years, uh, two years in the making or at least two years on order. And we've had it in our building for maybe a week.
Wow.
Have yet to put in service. It failed Connecticut inspection and we're paying for it too.
Maybe they'll move faster if we hold back a check.
So I was, I was going to ask finance that question, you know, if 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 we buy a product and it's not usable, why are we paying for it? Maybe the the legal side of it can get involved. So I think, if anything, when I mentioned it to Doug, I think the I guess his feeling was wait for it, wait for us to actually get it, though it's at least ours and then go down that road.
Yeah, I guess see what finance says. That's their their baby.
Yeah. They might say to have legal, just write a letter. Do something.
Something would be nice. Another ambulance would be great.
Something that runs.
Exactly.
They can't provide us with something temporarily.
I I don't believe so.
Something, you know.
I know, I know we, Doug and I were kicking around the idea of when we go down to AAV in, at the end of the month, maybe driving two ambulances back. But we don't know.
That's a good idea.
Yep. See, if finance wants to cancel that order and just pick up one they've got on the lot.
Yeah, they should, they should look at potentially leasing vehicle as opposed to buying. They bought this, right?
Correct. I know, I know lead time is for any, any ambulance or even fire apparatus is at least a year and a half to two years right now.
Yeah.
So I'd be willing to bet that even if, even if we were at AAV and there was one on the lot, I'd be willing to bet there was at least another dozen potential bidders or buyers for it. So.
Okay. Well, not much you can do about that one either.
I'm just full of great news tonight.
Oh. You need to go out and have a nice dinner and a little vinyl. Okay, uh, approval of special agency funds for EMS week. Who's baby's that?
Um, so I'm gonna kick that to Lee because she probably has more of the specifics on it. I I just have like prices and a generic idea.
As 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 a member of the public, I would like to um ask to spend some money on our crews this year. I had planned to put together something um a little lighter and more focused on on health and wellness. So I was created, um, I asked them to mark up a summer beach towel with a summer beach ball. And then hopefully a a an ice cream voucher to go with it and just something to encourage everybody to go out there and actually take. And then hopefully a, an ice cream voucher to go with it and just something to encourage everybody to go out there and actually take the rest that they deserve. Um, so that's what we had marked up, um, it comes out to somewhere around twenty dollars per head. Um, for our providers as a thank you for. EMS week, um, I think I quoted it around seventy providers, cuz we don't have a lot of providers at the moment. Um. And what else are we asking for tonight? I know I emailed you this like two weeks ago, um.
Open house?
Oh, an open house, I just, I don't know that we'll need it. Usually at open house, the association covers all of our expenses that come up. Uh, you know, we just do the face painting, the ice cream truck, um, things like that, but. Um, usually I've always just kind of come to you for like a five hundred dollar buffer. Just in case, um, cuz, um, they usually don't approve what they will. Spend until closer to the time and I have to go ahead and book things. Um, so I just like to kind of have a buffer, um, and that's, you know, only if we need it, things like tablecloths and decorations, nothing crazy. And I think historically we haven't really spent it. Uh, maybe on the cake I spent it, I can't remember, but usually we don't, usually the association takes care of it all, but just in case. I thought I'd ask for a buffer so that we don't have any last minute panicking.
Sounds good. Um. Okay, what do we wanna do? Who wants to, uh? Yeah, I, yeah, I think they are. The ball and the, the towel and things like that, is that what's gonna be going to all of the team?
Yeah, so that would be the gift that we give out at the EMS week staff appreciation picnic.
Okay.
Um, you know, sometimes we've given a T-shirt, sometimes we've given the cup. Last year, I think we gave the, the cup with a hot chocolate. You know, the insulated cups, um, I think we gave, and sweatpants. A year before that, we gave phenomenal hoodies. Um. We always try to come up with something different or interesting that they'll like, but that's good quality. Um, and this doesn't have to be it, really, I'm open to suggestions, I just threw out one idea, a couple of ideas and. That sounded like something fun, but if somebody wants me to go back to sweatshirts and have someone design it, we can do that. I am, I'm not married to any of this. Just wanting to do something. I know our team usually always loves what we, we give, we always, um. Get nice comments.
Actually sounds like a good idea, I mean, it's more. To encourage rest than.
Yeah, it's, it's really to focus on, like, we, we mean what we say, we want you to take the time to, um. Get a work-life balance and spend time with your families this summer, go out, enjoy yourselves, you know.
Yeah.
All right, and how much did, uh, do you think we need for that?
Andrew, what did I say we needed? Two thousand?
Yeah, for EMS week, I had twenty-five hundred and then open houses is the five hundred. And then there was a portable toilet for one twenty-five.
Who needs a toilet?
There's a portable toilet, they're charging us for the toilet?
Yeah, the. It's not Parks and Rec that's charging us, it's the actual company that up their charges. So they upped it from like sixty dollars, a hundred and twenty-five dollars and they, uh. They have to charge us this year for it, so they're not making any money, they're just covering their costs.
Okay. Fair enough. And yeah, the twenty-five hundred dollars, by the way, guys, is a buffer, because I wasn't gonna be at this meeting to, to, to say anything, so I cut, you know. Cuz I know normally you guys generously give me a buffer, so I already built the buffer in in case I wasn't here, um. Just so that you know, it might not end up costing us twenty-five hundred dollars, it might be closer to. Two thousand.
All right, but we can do a, you know, up to. Twenty-five hundred dollars and. So I, you know, I'll listen up, we'll, we'll do a motion, I do a motion to allow. Um, for EMS, uh, week up to twenty-five hundred dollars. Um, whatever is needed for. Uh, for example, for the towels and the ball, et cetera, so. That would be one motion and then we'll do another one for, up Shay.
Second.
Okay, uh, this got, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed or abstained? Okay, motion passed.
Great, um.
Now go for the second one.
And the second was, um. Five hundred dollars for the, uh, open house, up to five hundred dollars for the, uh. Uh, costs involved, uh, with, uh, an open house.
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Anybody have any comments? No? Okay, let's vote on it. All in favor, say aye.
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 Anybody opposed or abstained? No, okay, motion passed.
Is there another one or are we?
People have to hold it now, we forgot to make a motion.
Uh, what was it, a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
Yeah.
Uh, just a motion to a lot of a hundred and twenty-five dollars so that people can relieve themselves. Uh, that's gonna be placed at Matt's house, I think we said, right?
Yes.
He wasn't here, yeah.
In the front yard, preferably.
All right, um, any comments, any questions, any? Discussion?
Nope.
Uh, all in favor of the hundred and twenty-five for the porta potty for Matt? Say aye. Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carries. What is this special event coverage review? What is that, Lee?
So that one's mine.
Oh, Andrew, what is that?
Um, so. Since, since we need to drum up revenue and we can't change our ambulance billing rates. Um. I took the last meeting that we had when we were talking about special event coverage and trying to look at the prices that we're charging people and. I brought in, uh, two of our E and Ts, Vince Nocera and Sam Manuel. We're actually really good at writing policies for this. Um, so we sat down, we. Hashed out a bunch of things and. Lo and behold, last Wednesday, Kate got a phone call for a standby at the high school for a band classic, which kind of expedited a couple of things. So we changed all of our pricing. For event medical standbys, so now that they're gonna start at. Uh, a three provider minimum for every ambulance that we send, so now there's not just two people being overworked. It's a three provider minimum, they're gonna be charged a four hour minimum at the highest level of care that's going to be allocated to the event standby. Uh, there's a two hundred and fifty dollar late charge if they don't request the standby coverage within fourteen or outside of fourteen days. Uh, if there's an ALS ambulance, ambulance, it's gonna be, I have all this in the policy, if you want me to send it to you too, so you don't have to take notes. Um, if it's a medical, if it's a paramedic ambulance, it's ninety dollars and these are hourly charges. So fifty dollars per E M T at three E M Ts for a four hour minimum. Ninety dollars for the medic unit, so that's ninety dollars for the E M T, ninety dollars for the medic, and then ninety dollars for the third provider. A four hour minimum, two hundred and fifty dollars late charge. If it's a larger, if it's a larger event and it requires more than two ambulances dedicated to the standby. We're gonna require a supervisor to either be on the call for it or at the location. If the supervisor needs to be at the location, it's a three hundred dollar flat fee. For the supervisor to be there, if it's. If there's an ALS or BLS specialty, so heat exertion is in the middle of. Middle of the cold or there's just a large population for. Whatever's happening, there's a hundred and fifty dollar charge for that. If we have to fill into the command positions, there's an additional charge for that. If there's. Bike patrol or walking patrol, there's additional charge for that. So. You're saying we're, we're upcharging significantly.
Good, about time.
Yep. And then. If, uh. So after the event will be over, we'll, we'll look at the event, make sure that we're, we're invoicing them correctly with the accurate rates and the accurate amounts. They'll have thirty days to pay their, pay the bill. After thirty days is a fifteen percent late charge and every seven days after that, it's an additional five percent. On top of the total balance.
Oh.
Top of the vig. Nice.
Did you run that by anybody to make sure that that's okay to do that? Or is there a problem with it? Or could there be a problem with it? Besides the fact that they don't wanna pay it?
So, um, the agreement and the policy, I believe, I believe that's what was sent to Joel.
Yeah.
So. Um. I mean, as far as everything else, we, we have the ability to charge for event medical standbys, we're not charging per. We're not charging for equipment, we're staying within the, the EMS regulations of staffing and everything else, so. We're not operating outside of our bounds, we're staying within our lane.
Yeah, I don't think it needs to go through anybody specific in the town. I, I would, I would only hope that HR needs a standby. Um, that's an extra surcharge, right?
Yeah, I think that was a ten.
That will show up three weeks after they wanted us.
Right. The, um.
Three months.
Three months, yeah.
The only thing that was, that was brought up actually last night when, when Vince, Sam and I, uh, met was. Uh. Last year and the year before, we brought in Easton to kind of try to build the inter-agency cooperation and, and teamwork and everything. If we, if we bring in an outside. Company or agency to work with us, whether, whether it's a staffing issue or just to, you know. Let them help out. We didn't, we, we weren't sure on how that was going to get built. Or like if we would, if we would bill for the resource, then we would. Kind of donate a portion of it to them. So that would be the only thing that. As of right now would be, or one of the only things that. I would wanna just fine tune.
Yeah, that makes sense. I mean, it would fall more on them as to. What they or how they would wanna accept anything or, or be taken care of, so. You know, like you said, even a donation is, you know, name it as a donation would be fine.
Yeah, especially, especially if they end up paying their providers to come. Help us cover like a graduation, I, I think it's, I think it's only fair to. At least offer something.
Sure.
In, in these events, they're required to have EMS present or is it optional?
So. That, I, I do know there's some events that require a medical standby, I know like high school football games. Per, I think it's per FCAC, they require an ambulance standby in order for the game to be played. I don't know if things like the band competition or anything else requires it, or if it's just recommended. I know BMX requires. Medical standby. But other than that, I, I was already talking to. Uh, Megan and Andy about, you know, if, when people come to for permit for a. A troubled day type event or somebody's using like a backyard, what, and if they have to pull a permit for something like that. If the permit is, if the, if the tenant on the permit is gonna exceed a certain amount or there's certain things that are there. At the very least. We should be knowledgeable, or we should have the knowledge of, of an event like that going on. So.
Isn't there a person limit too, where over a certain number of people? It's required to have a police pre- and EMS presence?
From my understanding is the police. I don't know if it's a police presence or police notification. And I think that's if it's going to in, like impede traffic or.
Right.
A potential disturbance for, you know, loud music or something.
Yeah, I think if someone has private, like. Twenty acres and they're running an event. I don't think they're required. To do anything like that unless they would choose, which they should, you know, to have it. Uh, available, but it's nothing that, you know. We would have to be concerned about unless they contacted us.
Okay.
Question, sorry if you don't mind, I'm not really here being invisible, but just a really quick question if, um. We, uh, send out our estimate for troubled day BMX, whatever, and, um, let's say BMX says no, thank you. Um, AMR said they'll do it for five hundred dollars less, is there any implication there for PSA area or anything like that? How does that, how's that work from a regulation standpoint?
So my understanding is that we have the, we have the first right and they can't. I guess, too, and he said they can't ambulance shop. They can't go to AMR, they can't go to Nelson and, and have them come in, we have to agree to it. So. That's the other, that's the other side that Vince and Sam are working on, just to make sure we're not.
That's my.
Kind of, kind of like cutting ourselves into a hole, if, if. Does that answer your question?
And, and to Lee's point, I think we just gotta be careful that we don't price ourselves out of.
Correct.
Getting some of these events, yeah, I'm all for the raises, I, I hundred percent in agreement, but I think we just. You know, maybe we adjust it, you know. Modestly as, as opposed to this some huge astronomical increase, but I mean, again, I mean, you guys, you'll fill it out and you'll see what the, uh, feedback's like.
So, um, Kate did go in and she compared the, the last band standby that we built for. And what this bill was and the, the price difference, it was higher this, this time, obviously, just because of the new prices. But I, I hate crap if I'm wrong, but I think it was only like a seven. It was like a five or seven hundred dollar increase, it wasn't like a two thousand dollar increase.
If the, the prices weren't that astronomical, but also what we did is we, we took out the, the discount that we were giving them. Um, Trumbull High School have built a bunch of times and, and sometimes they'll pay their bills and sometimes, you know, they give a small finger and walk away and they don't pay anything. Um. So we took out like the, the twenty percent discount as well and it only ended up being like a, a five hundred, six hundred, seven hundred dollar, you know, difference. In, um, in the total bill. Plus, you have to take into consideration two hundred and fifty of that is the fact that the standby was on Saturday and they called on like Thursday to book it. Um, which then creates a problem for us trying to staff, you know, three people for a standby with, you know, two days' notice. Um. So it wasn't, it wasn't that, that much of a difference.
Yeah, plus the board of events got deep pockets, so.
Yeah.
I mean, the other thing too is, is we don't. We don't wanna be, we don't wanna be so cold with everybody too, so, you know, if. If the board event calls for football standbys and they wanna schedule off all their football standbys at once. It's like, I will, we'll schedule six standbys, but we might bill you for. For Kate suggested, we'll bill you for the six, but if you may get to the playoffs, we won't charge you for the playoffs. For at least one ambulance, if we need something bigger, then. We'll just charge you for whatever the extra is, so. We'll still, we'll still work with. With, with organizations, especially if they're not for profit and they're not part of the town.
Right.
Yeah, cuz sometimes they play in our fields. For, uh, championship games.
Right.
And we should be able to get money for standby for those.
But speaking of, I do wanna, before I final invoice Trumbull for the precautions for last week, I just wanna go over it with you tomorrow, make sure everything. Adds up and looks appropriate.
You got it.
Great. All right, anybody else have any questions, comments? Thank you to our visitor. Comment.
Our public?
Our public and have a safe trip to South Africa.
Thanks, guys.
How long are you gonna be down there for?
Just, just over a week, just, it's a crazy trip, I fly in and I come back next. Yeah, I think I'll leave tomorrow night, I come back on Friday morning.
Feel free to bring a couple of ambulances back too.
No, I'm bringing you South African candy from my childhood.
All right, anybody wanna make a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Aw, thanks Phil, anybody want to second it?
I'll second it.
All right. Uh, anybody wanna say they're not in favor of it? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Good. All right, thank you very much, everybody.
Bye, guys.
Seeing you.
Stay safe.
Yes.
Good night, everyone.
Bye, thank you.
Thank you, Phil.